Open the March first, two thousand eighteen, meeting of the county commissioners and bring that meeting to order. And as is customary, would you please join me for a moment of silence? Now, please join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, next on our regular agenda is public comment. Is there any public comment here this morning? Seeing none, we are looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meetings. I'll send them.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the prior meetings. Is there any discussion or questions about the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as read, please, as printed, rather, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The minutes are approved and we'll move to the treasurer's report, Sally.
Good morning, Fishers.
Good morning.
We had receipts on February the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth of five hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and eighteen cents. That was brought us to a total cash of one million, two hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred sixty-four dollars and five cents. Our expenditures this week were one million, one hundred and three thousand, six hundred fifty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents. Our undistributed tax claim was eighty thousand, two hundred and three dollars and twenty-eight cents. So, we have a balance of a hundred and two thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. We did have money set aside for this payroll, but I only used a portion of it. I used four hundred thousand of it, so we're good there. Didn't have to use any of our reserves.
I make a motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented.
A second, the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the treasurer's report. Are there any questions for the treasurer? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the treasurer's report as presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Treasurer's report is accepted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Tax bills are going out one time.
Today. They're supposed to be mailed today.
Darn.
This is everybody's stuff. This year, Sally has had ample time to review them.
Yes, I actually saw the duplicate end of bills prior to sending them to the printer, so that helped. And we did catch a couple mistakes that had to be corrected before they went, so.
Someday.
Kim actually called.
Someday we'll catch up with Dolphin County and Lancaster County where I already have paid my taxes.
I know. I always tell them if they're ready early, please mail them early. And I thought maybe that would happen this year.
Well, thanks to everyone, all the departments that got together to make it happen. That's awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. You've been a big help up there. It's good. And I actually, yeah, it's good.
Okay. We'll look forward to receiving our taxes.
Sure you will.
The treasurer's report.
Hi, how are you?
Human Resources.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Michelle Ledgers, Director of Human Resources.
The Yan Shank Human Resources Assistant.
Personnel transactions under resignations and terminations. Jeremy Reb, Senior Auditor, Budget Analysis, Controller's Office, resignation effective March ninth. Daniel Elise, Accountant slash Auditor, resignation effective February twenty-eighth. Dom Blau and DJ Clark, resignation effective March thirtieth. Devonte Davis, Part-Time Correctional Officer, resignation effective February eleventh. Renee Lemke, Casual Part-Time Special Clerk, resignation effective March first. And Rose Brown, Part-Time Developmental Assistant, termination effective February twenty-third.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to accept the resignations and terminations as read. Are there any questions or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting those terminations and resignations, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Moving on to F M L A, leaves of absence. Anna Cardona from the treasurer's office, one year of intermittent F M L A, effective January twenty-third. And Joan Sowers from Motor Registration, four weeks of unpaid leave of absence, effective January thirtieth through February twenty-second.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the leaves of absence. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the leaves, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Moving on to changes of status, transfers and promotions. Angel Price, promotion from Second Deputy Controller in the Controller's Office to First Deputy Controller at the rate of one thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents by weekly, effective April ninth. Lisa Long, promotion from nine-one-one telecommunicator in Department of Emergency Services to nine-one-one supervisor at the rate of one thousand six hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-six cents by weekly, effective March twelfth. Jeremy Leffler, promotion from nine-one-one telecommunicator in Department of Emergency Services to nine-one-one supervisor at the rate of one thousand nine hundred seven dollars and forty-seven cents by weekly, effective March twelfth. Daniel Riddle, change of status from part-time LPN at the prison to full-time LPN at rate of twenty dollars per hour, effective March fifth. And Donald Perkins, promotion from corporal at the prison to sergeant at the rate of twenty-nine dollars and fourteen cents per hour, effective March eleven.
I'll send them.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept those changes of status as presented. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of accepting the changes of status, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Under other transactions, I have a motion to approve Treasurer Sally Nguyen's request to have her current employees and Belinda Spicer in tax claim work an additional five hours per week for approximately ten weeks, effective March twelfth, as well as have M. Collett Arntz work in her office for approximately ten weeks, with her total hours working during this timeframe not to exceed three hundred and fifty hours, effective March twelve.
So moved. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to adjust the hours in the treasurer's department. Are there any questions or comments?
There's a question. Does that take it from thirty-five to forty during that time?
Yes. It does.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the hour change as proposed by the treasurer, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
President Judge Tewok would like to hire Naveen Toddress as administrative assistant slash interpreter at the rate of one thousand thirty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents by weekly, with fifty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents by weekly interpreter pay, effective March twelfth. The prison would like to hire Naomi Mullen as a part-time LPN at the rate of sixteen dollars and eighty-three cents per hour, effective March fifth. President Judge Tewok would like to hire Rodolfo Leon for probation services as an adult probation officer at the rate of one thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars by weekly, effective March fifth. Renova would like to hire Lindsay Brensinger as a full-time LPN at the rate of twenty dollars per hour, effective March twenty-sixth.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve those hirings. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to handle those hirings, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Moving on to Salary Board, if there are no questions regarding the transactions presented, is there a motion to adopt these transactions onto the salary board?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second for the salary board changes. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Their mandated conference seminars. I have Daniel Seaman, Carl Stone, Ted Conley, Mike Keener, Carrie Wensler, and Tanya Kip from the Assessment Office would like to attend the following two trainings. A A P Annual Meeting in Valley Forge, April twenty-fifth to the twenty-seventh. Two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollar total registration fee with mileage reimbursement mandated by Department of State. And the South Central Chapter Meeting in Guttysburg, March twenty-third, meals reimbursement, three credits mandated by Department of State. And Sean Zellers and Serena Strauss from the Department of Emergency Services would like to attend the active shooter incidents in Hokie, March fourteenth, three hundred ninety-eight dollar total registration fee with mileage, meals, parking, tolls reimbursement, eight credits mandated by PMA. Sally Berry and Sue Christner from probation services would like to attend the Chiefs Council General Membership Meeting in State College, March fifteenth and sixteenth, with lodging meals reimbursement, three credits mandated by J C J C. Sally Berry from probation services would like to attend the C J A Conference in State College, April third and fourth, lodging meals reimbursement, twelve credits mandated by P B P P. Samantha Chesney from probation services would like to attend Addiction and Trauma in Mount Joy, March twenty-third, one hundred and fifty dollar total registration fee, seven point five credits mandated by P B P P. John Schott from probation services would like to attend the DUI Coordinators Conference in State College, May seventeenth and eighteenth, lodging and meals reimbursement, six credits mandated by Penn Doc. Dwight Penberth and Chris Frye from probation services would like to attend Making the Transition from Staff to Supervisor in Harrisburg, May eleventh, one hundred and ninety-nine dollar and ninety-nine cent registration fee with meals reimbursement, six credits mandated by J C J C and P B P P. Amanda Boyer, Heather Whitman, and Noah Aguilar Gonzalez from probation services would like to attend the Stimulant Drugs Training in Mechanicsburg, April eighteenth and nineteenth, one hundred and sixty dollar total registration fee, meals reimbursement, nine credits mandated by J C J C. And Brian Deidre from Public Defender's Office would like to attend the Public Defenders Association of P A Training in Carlisle, March seventh and eighth, mileage reimbursement, seven credits mandated by P A Supreme Court.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the attendance of our folks at the mandated conferences. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Under requested, Karen Alonso and Sue Emmerich from Children and Youth would like to attend the P C Y A Meeting in State College, March fifteenth, one hundred and fifty dollar total registration fee with mileage, meals, and parking reimbursement.
Also moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to attend the requested conference. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Monica Greff from District Attorney's Office would like to attend the Sentencing Seminar of Guidelines in Marlburn, March twenty-first, with meals, parking, and tolls reimbursement.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve that requested conference or the District Attorney's Office. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Carl Wensler from Department of Emergency Services would like to attend the Intermedics Web E O C Preparedness Summit in Atlanta, Georgia, May seventh through the tenth, two hundred and fifty dollar total registration fee with lodging, mileage, meals, parking, and tolls reimbursement.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Emergency Service Requested Conference. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Bob Dow and Gary Verna from Department of Emergency Services would like to attend the Homeland Security Conference in Harrisburg, March twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth, with mileage reimbursement.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second for the request to attend the Homeland Security Conference. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Matt Rogers from Department of Emergency Services and Hazmat would like to attend the International Hazmat Conference in Baltimore, Maryland, June sixth, three to the tenth, four hundred and twenty dollar total registration fee with lodging, mileage, meals, parking, and tolls reimbursement.
I'll send them.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the conference request for Hazmat. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Gary Verna from Department of Emergency Services would like to attend the V F I S Recruitment and Retention Training in Mechanicsburg, March fourteenth, with mileage and meals reimbursement.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second for Gary Verna to attend the Emergency Service Conference requested. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
John Fitzky and Song Kim from Planning Department would like to attend the Homeland Security Conference in Harrisburg, March twenty-eighth, one hundred and sixty dollar total registration fee, no other reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the Planning Department folks to attend Homeland Security Conference Request. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Denise Frattle from Reporter of D's would like to attend the Landex Users Conference in Penn State, April twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, with mileage reimbursement.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second for a request to attend the Landex Conference. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Maria Boraczak and Kelly Travis from Register of Wills would like to attend the Annual Spring Conference in State College, April eighteenth, with mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second for a request to attend the Register of Wills Conference. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
And Joelle and Song from Motor Registration would like to attend the Notary Reappointment Seminar in Harrisburg, June sixth, sixty-nine dollar total registration fee with mileage, meals, parking, parking reimbursement.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second for Joelle to attend the Notary Conference. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. If you could get through the things I have, I scheduled them at ten, definitely it would be something to fill the gap here, but I'd be materialized, so we can have them earlier. You could go through my things.
Why don't you try to follow the schedule, do the things that you have.
I didn't know if anyone else was. Okay. Then I'll start with the Lebanon County Community Action Partnership is requesting your approval on the contract between the county and the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development for Community Services Block Grant. This is for the two thousand eighteen year in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it's an annual grant that they gather the same amount every year. It's used toward rental assistance for consumers, transportation passes, childcare subsidies, and so is also used for staff salary and benefit reimbursement for the case managers.
So we need a motion to accept the grant.
Yes.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to accept the Community Action Partnership Grant as we've received information ahead of time. Are there any questions or comments concerning that grant? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the grant as presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Grant is approved.
And also for the Community Action Partnership, I have appointments and reappointments and an appointment for the Community Action Partnership Advisory Board. The first would be reappointments. Eligible for those are Dennis Firestone, Wiley Parker, Brian Hoffman, and Scott Berry, all of whom have agreed to serve another term, which would take them to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve those reappointments of folks who have served on the board previously and getting another term. Any questions or comments concerning those appointments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the appointments as presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
All right, then there's also a vacancy on the CAP Advisory Board and it's a public official category. And they are recommending that Michael McKenna, who is the manager in Myerstown Borough, be appointed to fill that vacancy. That would take him to December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
I'll move to have Mr. McKenna fill the unexpired term.
On the second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to appoint Michael McKenna to the remainder of that term. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
We've received notice from the Visit Lebanon Valley Board of Directors that they are, they are in receipt of two resignations from the board, one from Ray Malay, who has submitted a letter saying that his job at Lebanon Broadcasting is just taking more of his time and can no longer serve. And also Stephen Summers from the Cornwall Iron Furnace, who is retiring from the parts. Accept those resignations.
So moved. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to accept those resignations. And if I may just make a comment, both those gentlemen have served well on that board and certainly Steve Summers is retiring after a long period of service to the Cornwall Iron Furnace, so he's going to be missed in both those positions. But so hearing that, we have a motion and a second to accept those resignations. Those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
All right, then I have a bid on a depository property from the tax claim bureau. Property is located at twenty-one A Twin Maples Park in Jackson Township. This was offered at upset tax sale for one thousand five dollars and forty-four cents on September eleven, from seventeen, did not sell. Was offered again at judicial sale for seven ninety-four eighty-eight. No sale on December eleven. And we now have a bid from Weber Properties at nine twenty-five Noble Street, Lebanon, for one dollar.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second to accept that bid of one dollar for the property in question. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Okay, I have two liquid fuels applications for County A, the first being from the city of Lebanon. For, these are both their fixed allocations for two thousand eighteen. This would be for use on streetlights, service, and repairs. Project cost for that is twenty-five thousand four seventy-seven, which also is their annual allocation in City Lebanon, twenty-five four seventy-seven.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the liquid fuels request by the city. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting that request, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Sorry, I couldn't combine these. The second one is for South Lebanon Township. The ten thousand dollar project is to purchase ice control salt, and their allocation toward that would be nine thousand four sixty-three.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second to accept that liquid fuels request. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Okay, and I have, from the Assessment Office, I have exemption requests for disabled veterans. First being for David R. Watson, one ninety-two Gable Drive in Myerstown, and the second for Gary Pietowski, Pietowski, two forty-six Albright Road, Newmanstown. And both of those have met the requirements for the disabled veteran exemption.
I'll move to approve those exemptions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the two veterans' requests for tax exemptions. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
And lastly, I have three requests for hotel tax grant funds that I distributed to you. Don't go prepared for today to do those or not, but.
Is there any chance we could get a presentation on them? At least on the one with the bicycles?
I think they're. It's up to the board.
I'm okay. Actually, Pat Krebs talked about this several times at the MPO meeting, so I feel comfortable. She also included information, yeah, in her package, so I'm comfortable with it.
I just had a couple of questions, so I was hoping that we could ask her.
You can still ask her. You can still ask her.
Okay.
Do you think you want to hold off on that?
Yeah.
Right. So the three that I have are from the Lebanon County Historical Society. They are requesting a project of forty thousand dollars and requesting thirty thousand of that. And it's sort of a list of things. They have fencing around the South Portal. They have hillside trail clearing, twenty-one hundred feet of hillside trail clearing. They have a connection to the rail trail and fencing along the quarry. Bulletin board, benches, signage at both rail trail entrances. And additionally, other repairs coming up are a garage dock replacement, a parking lot dock bank stabilization, and footbridge support beam replacement. Those are all things, they seem to be sort of having on the side, waiting for some costs on those, but ultimately they're combining everything into one request for forty thousand dollars and asking thirty of that to come from the hotel tax. The second one I have is Lebanon County Four-H Horse and Pony Club. And they are looking to replace their, the ring that they use for equestrian activities at the Lebanon Fairgrounds and Expo. And they attached a detailed letter in why they believe that would be a cost that they think should come from the hotel tax. Total project is five thousand one ninety. They're requesting three thousand eight hundred dollars. And then the last one is, for sure, let's mention, this is the Lebanon Valley Bicycle Coalition. They are undertaking a project called the Drive With Care Campaign, where they would purchase billboard space and have a design for what their billboards would look like, including local bicyclists in the billboard campaign. And they would, it's a total project cost of thirty thousand dollars. However, they have in-kind services that they're putting toward it, working with back needed advertising for development of the campaign. They've also sought sponsorships, partnerships, and other participants to help fund it and the preparation of media releases and associated events. So all total, their thirty thousand dollar project is requesting five thousand dollars in hotel tax funds.
Do you want us to consider those in total, or should we do them separately?
You can do them as a list, if you're.
Yeah, separately, I would appreciate it.
Okay, we'll take them separately then. Do I have a motion to approve the Historical Society's request?
So. It seems like reasonable request. I don't know.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the request from the Historical Society to make those changes at Tunnel Hill Park. And the request is for thirty thousand dollars. All those in favor of the request as presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered. And then the, what was the?
Four-H Horse and Pony.
Four-H Horse and Pony Club for?
Three thousand eight hundred dollars.
Three thousand eight hundred dollars for the horse ring.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the request of the Pony Club for that grant. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered. And then the last one for the Bicycle Coalition, a five thousand dollar request, and that seems very reasonable considering the overall cost. Do I have a motion?
Wait once. I'll send them.
Do I have a second? I'll second the motion to grant that five thousand dollar request for the effort on the part of the Bicycle Coalition. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, I do. I mean, I would have preferred to ask Pat, that maybe you know the answers. Do you know if there's any connection to Charles Alonso and this effort for the advertising?
Charles Lon?
Yes.
Mario?
The fellow who was coming in last week.
Connection to the advertising?
Yeah, because of the bicycle accident, end of it, and then the whole thing that South London area, is there a connection in it?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'm just, I don't know. And I wondered what.
I mean, would there be, is there a concern that someone was struck on a bicycle? I think there is a concern, but I don't see, I don't know, I'm not aware, and I've spoken I think there is a concern, but I don't see, I don't know, I'm not aware, and I've spoken to Pat at length about this. I'm not aware of a direct relationship between that accident and this request. They just obviously are looking for better safety practices on the part of cyclists and motorists. So that's their effort, which I think is legitimate. Any other questions?
Again, I have, I have a couple of questions surrounding that, but I don't, since you're not aware of it.
No, that was never mentioned in the meeting, Commissioner, so.
I think, if I can address that, I think if you're referring to Mr. Lonzo's video on YouTube where he talks about an accident, he was in a motocross accident.
Okay, so it wasn't a bicycle?
No, I don't think there's anything at all.
There's no relationship between the thing that happened downstairs and this at all. I don't think Pat even knows.
He's a dirt bike, you know, amateur dirt bike racer.
Okay, so it wasn't a bicycle?
No.
I know bike and thought it was a bicycle.
Well, if you watched his video, he said another motocross person landed on top of him. So that obviously had no relationship to an accident out in South London area township. All right, any other questions or comments concerning the Bicycle Coalition's request for hotel tax? Incidentally, you know, sometimes folks might look at these and say, what's the relationship between these and tourism? And just a few years ago, Pat and the Bicycle Coalition brought a group of folks in from, I think, from New York State, spent at least a week here, stayed in our hotels and by Lebanon County, and I think some of Berks County. So that opportunity is always here, and I'm sure will be making more of those efforts. So with that said, all those in favor of agreeing to the grant for the Bicycle Coalition of five thousand dollars indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye, because I still have questions that I don't think can be addressed here today.
You want to vote against it, or would you like to abstain?
I would like to abstain. That's a good suggestion, because I am just not ready to vote for it, because I don't have all my information.
Motion is approved, two aye, one abstention. Folks from the Visit Lebanon Valley, you're up. All right, you do have anything else standing, is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Right on time, see that?
Yeah. That's good.
I'll give Jamie the credit. Good morning, and if you would, please introduce yourselves and let us hear what you have to say.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Josie Ains, and I'm Chair of Visit Lebanon Valley. I'd like to introduce our new President and our Administrative Assistant to Visit Lebanon Valley, Jennifer Cuso, who is our new President, and Mary Wiggley, who's our Administrative Assistant. As you know, this is Jennifer's third week in her new position. And Mary's been here over a year, but I felt it was good for Mary to come along also, so that she could get to meet everyone here on the board and kind of go through her qualifications. And then I'll just let Jennifer go through what she has done in the last three weeks. We've been very busy, and I'm really proud of what we have accomplished in the three weeks. So I'll introduce Mary, Mary.
Well, I started, I started last year, I'm December sixth, and I have a degree in American history. I worked at the Richland Library. I worked in the school district. I'm a native of Lebanon County, so I know the places and I learned a lot about Lebanon County. I do freelance writing, so I'm, I think I'm a good asset to the Visit Lebanon Valley, working on pamphlets, and I do the social media for it.
Thank you, Mary.
Jennifer Cuso, our new President.
Good morning. I made a comprehensive list of some of the things I've done in the last two and a half, three weeks. And the two priorities that I had when I walked in were things that had been started that needed to be addressed right away. And number one was the community guide, the two thousand eighteen community guide will be coming out next month, mid-March. And we're getting all the ads in the last minute push to get everything exactly how it needs to be. It will be a larger size, just to give you an idea, and with a beautiful cover of Cornwall furnace on the front. And it's very nicely done. So we're very proud of that. The other priority that we worked on was, it was brought to my attention that the Atlantic Sunrise Pipeline was offering a grant, and has been, I believe, for the last maybe two years, for different entities. And I started thinking, what could we do to use that money towards promoting all of Lebanon Valley? And we had received a request from Pennsylvania State Parks and Recreation Association. And they said, do you have any kind of literature that comprehensively includes all of the outdoor things? I'm like, that's what we need to do. So we compiled a proposal for the grant, and we don't know if we got it yet, of course. We only submitted it yesterday, but we worked like crazy and submitted. We had over sixteen different Lebanon Valley features between the rail trails and, you know, Bretna Lake and Coleman's Park and, you know, Stover's Dam and the list, Memorial Lake and the Quiddie and the Garbage Museum, all the wonderful things that nobody else has, but that we have, and that makes Lebanon Valley so special. So we're really hoping that gets approved, and maybe, you know, that's something that we can really highlight, a reason, another reason to come to Lebanon Valley. Some other priorities of my time have been to meet with, of course, Pat Curwin at the Expo and understand how our relationship can work together and support each other on another level, as well as the Chamber of Commerce. And we will be hosting a mixer for the Chamber of Commerce, or with, in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce in March as an open house with the farmer's market and our office adjacent to, and inviting the community through the chamber to come and meet us and see exactly what this visitor center is all about. We are a welcome center, and we want locals as well as visitors to rely on us for information and brochures. One of the other things that I've been working on is with the colleges in the area. I didn't think we'd had any information relevant right away if someone came in and said, you know, what are the colleges in the area? And I met with Roger, or Jeffrey Roche, the Vice President of Strategic Initiatives at Lebanon Valley College. And now we have their information, and they will have our information. We're talking about possible internships and ways that we can have our guide there and talk through enrollment and new students and parents coming to the area. And then I met with Laurie Bowersachs at HAC as well to do the exact same thing. We need to have a presence there, and, you know, they need to have a presence with us. There's many more things that I worked on. I don't want to go through everything, but I do have a list that I can share with you. And I added on our Getaways on display, it's a professional company that promotes our guidebook through AAA offices in Pennsylvania and New Jersey, as well as high-traffic tourist spots throughout the tri-state, basically tri-state region. And we're adding to the In The Nook, the Spooky Nook Sports Complex and Hotel Complex. So that's an additional place that we can promote. And I also met with Bretna Theater new director, Brian Curtis. So we're working on how we can work together and support each other. My whole philosophy is through collaboration, I think, working with all these different businesses, entities, natural attractions, everything that we have to offer in Lebanon Valley needs to work with us so that we can promote everyone equally. And it just feels like a very cohesive group. And that's our mission, to be positive and work with everyone and for the greater good. And I have one quote from Zig Ziglar that I thought summed up my first couple of weeks. Of course, I don't have business cards yet, so all of that and no business cards. But anyway, one day at a time. The quote is, "Difficult roads often lead to beautiful destinations, for the best is yet to come." Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Phillips was disappointed that the cover did not have the picture of the three county Commissioners.
Oh.
I'm in trouble already.
When you said it was a beautiful picture, I figured it had to be us.
How did you?
Hey, congratulations, by the way, on your, you know, accomplishing this position. And we look forward to working with you. And I just was wondering if, this is an exciting time for tourism in Lebanon County. There's a lot of good things in our story to tell. Can you just give us a little bit about your background, just a couple minutes?
Oh, of course, that was my fault. I was going to say, but she could go ahead and.
That was my question too.
Yeah. I'm born and raised in Palmyra, Lebanon County native. My mother was a girmic, so, you know, there are roots way, way back. And I have a tourism degree. It was Brandywine, which is a version of Widener, an affiliate of Widener University. And I went right out of college with Hershey and, well, Marriott. I started with Marriott and then went to Hershey Entertainment Resort Company. So I feel my hospitality roots and background really molded me as a twenty-something, you know, to really understand quality and a good perception of yourself and your property that you represent in all situations, at all times of day. I feel like I can work twenty-four seven, because anything I do or anything I say would represent Visit Lebanon Valley, and I understand that. Over those past few years then, I have had marketing and sales and advertising experience with a radio station and several ad agencies in the area. And always looking for tourism and a way to come back to Lebanon Valley. And I'm pleased to say that I'm very happy to be here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, Commissioner?
No, that was my question, as I said.
Anything else?
No.
Anyone else have any questions for the tourism entourage?
Go get them.
Thank you very much.
I do have one, did you, did you work with Pat Curwin within your past?
Yes, we were at Hershey at the same time, yes.
That's awesome.
It's funny how paths cross and never burn bridges behind you.
Very good.
Yeah, that's nice.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I did have one more thing, if you would. Sally Newen, Treasurer, distributed a Record Improvement request to you on behalf of Barb Smith. And if you're prepared, and Barb can talk about the request, and I can too, I done and explored the story, Gary, with her a couple of weeks ago. So if you're prepared to discuss that today.
I thought it was a reasonable request, if I've seen the vault, definitely needs some improvement.
You want to have Barb walk through that? She read it here.
Do you have the information there, Sally?
I do have it.
We did, by the way, try to see if there were other sources for some kind of a story, rolling storage. Domestic Relations has a setup there that they are going to remove, but it's not going to be for a couple of years through renovations. So if that was going to become available, you know, in the very near future, we could reuse that by just relocating it down to a storage facility. Unfortunately, probation had something that wouldn't have been suitable. But that was before we could have put two and two together here, and unfortunately, that got scrapped, so.
I know.
Yeah. Had it been six months later, we probably could have put the, and put them together, so.
I'm sure there's more files on that.
Yeah, don't let them scrap any of those.
No.
Some of the funding's coming from your.
Yes.
The total project price is fifty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars and eighty-three cents. And Barb is willing to put twenty thousand dollars in our organization fund toward that, so we can get thirty-two nine fifty-one.
Say that total amount again, fifty-two?
Nine hundred fifty-one dollars and eighty-three cents.
Again, this is from the Record Improvement Fund, which is a fund that is, the source of revenue is on the documents and things that are recorded in the Recorder Deeds Office. So one dollar for each of those goes into your fund, and the other dollar goes into a fund that is maintained specifically by the Recorder of Deeds. So that's why when Sally distributes this, it goes to all of the row officers except for Recorder of Deeds to chime in.
Yeah, I don't think it's quite all of them, but it's Register, Will, the Sheriff, myself, and actually Barb is on that committee.
So not the Cor.
No.
Not the Cor or the DA, okay.
The Controller.
I'll make a motion based on Sally and the other officers that are elected that we move ahead and purchase this, whatever they're calling it these days.
It's actually a manual rolling storage unit. It's not like any sort of electrical equipment, so that's key.
That's good down there.
I'll second the motion. I've got a question.
Okay.
Sally, what's the balance in that fund?
We have now a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, and there's some interest I need to add to that total yet.
Is that before or after?
Before.
Okay, thank you.
We get about between twenty-five hundred and three thousand, or thirty-three hundred dollars a month. It was back in two thousand seventeen, in one month, we got like thirty-three hundred. That's a little higher than normal, but that's about what we get each month, I'm assuming.
And Barb, will this address the safety issues that you spoke to me about?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, all right, any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the Protonitaries' request for this storage unit indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Phillips, yes, absolutely.
Just an early FYI type thing, the Spotted Lantern Fly, some may have heard of it. If you have any questions at this point, to call the Extension Office at seven one seven two seven zero four three nine one. They're having a webinar this afternoon for master gardeners, but they're in the process of training six hundred master gardeners across the state. And so that'll be the resource ultimately, but there's a website, and you could just Google Spotted Lantern Fly and get a lot of information on that too. But I just want to get out, they're going to be the focal point for, or the resource, and they have plenty of literature there too, if somebody wants to just stop by and pick up some literature on that topic, so.
That's a question.
It is horrible, I'll tell you.
Is that still in Burke County?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's where it starts, yeah.
It hasn't reached Lebanon County yet, has it?
Oh, yeah. We're under quarantine.
Oh, okay, okay.
Be aware.
I want to go back, if I could, to the device that I'm following.
How much, how many additional documents, how much storage are you going to get? Is it additional storage?
This is what it looks like. So it's a rolling shelves?
It's not so much having the extra storage, it's managing what she already has. She has files going back to the, I guess primarily the seventies and eighties that this will address, that she's getting increased demand for, or requests to retrieve, whether it be for the courts or for, you know, these are maybe past long ago divorces or things like that, that are in boxes, heavy boxes with not necessarily great organization. And they'll go down there, and sometimes it takes a very long time to find what they're looking for. And there is a safety issue, because they're stacked high, and these things are collapsing, you know, on top of each other from the weight of each other.
Lifting.
And so it's just, it just needs a very good, she needs a very good system to be able to retrieve these. You go down at least once a week to storage, maybe?
Usually, yes.
For these requests, and it's just, you know, it's taking a lot of time and a lot of effort, and it's, I don't want to call it a mess, because she's done the best she's, she can with what they have there, but it's been a real struggle to improve what's there, and this will just, and this is going to take time. I mean, putting what you have into this system is going to take a lot of time, but once it's there, it's going to be great. So it's really not, these aren't new files, and it's not really going to gain much more. It's just going to organize what you have for retrieval.
And the beauty of it is, as now they will. And the beauty of it is, as now they will be organized, now we can scan them and destroy to make room for the New Year files, which we're constantly having to find space for in the office. So it's going to just put on a rotation, destroy, move, and keep it organized.
There are a lot of departments that exist there in that storage area. It's, it's full, it's organized, but it's full. But I would say that, that the pro bonitaries accesses them more than anyone. Just very frequent access. It would be nice to have that somewhere here in the building, but, you know, the vaults that she already has are full. The floor space is already being utilized, so it's sort of turning storage into a more frequent retrieval.
Sally, going back to the original question, does that paper say how many files theoretically can be stored in there? How many files?
It probably doesn't, because he took measurements and counted how many were in a box. Once this is installed and we put all the files out there into the system, we will have room left over.
And they go in hanging files in there, right? Is that how they go in there?
No.
No?
Just like we have downstairs.
Okay.
They're on a track, so they crank the wheel on the end and they all compress together and you can open them at any interval.
Now, we will have the shelving units that I purchased. Those will be not used for, I don't know what function you could find within the county or even down at the warehouse, because I have, because I don't want to scrap those like, you know, the things.
It says 431 square foot deck and ramp, so I don't know if that can be calculated into any, you know, numbers as far as the size of it.
Well, that sounds like a footprint. So that doesn't give you information per se.
There's 30 sections of four foot.
You've used what you needed as, in calculating the size unit, right?
Yes, vendor, yes, he counted how many were in a box, he counted how many boxes, he saw the shelving units, how many on each unit, calculated the floor space and then with, you know, this being put in place.
The, as we gain new files, are they being printed electronically now?
We are scanning everything before. This is all back scanning, that we just don't have anybody do it.
I knew you were working on scanning, yeah.
Yes, before anything goes over now, currently it is scanned.
So then you might not have to retrieve that, right?
Exactly. And we have to still go to microfilm to retrieve some things, so.
And, and you do, you do still have judges that want the paper record.
Oh, all the time.
So electronically retrieval doesn't, isn't always the solution, the solution when the courts want to have a paper copy.
Yes.
Gordon?
You just answered essentially my, my question, if the courts want the paper copy, I guess you've got to keep it around.
Or produce it from the scan when they need it.
Okay, but, but that's, that's permissible, you print it out from, from a digital copy. Where are you on, on the back scanning? How much more do you need to do before?
What year are you back to?
Well, we started in 2008, but we had somebody who was back scanning, she would pick a year, like she might have done all 1994. So she would mark the box, if this is back scanning. So I'm going to say from 2007, that's forward, it's scanned, it's in the system, but now we're going back to the 70s. Periodically you'll find a year or a section that has been scanned and it's marked.
So it's not being done chronologically backwards?
No, which is what we want to do. Once everything is in order, then we can. I mean, it seems silly, if you want a file, we just give you the file, why don't we scan it in, now we have it, now we have a backup. But then we have it marked, so we know it's scanned. That make sense? If you come back for it again, we already have it because we know we have it marked. Everything's marked scanned once it is.
The dumpster is the, is the ultimate hope for these documents, however, you've got to scan them all.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.